Good evening and welcome to the special work session Wednesday, the 17th. I'd like to call this meeting to order and note that all board members are in attendance except Bob Ockenden. In accordance with Chapter 105 of the New York Public Officers' Law, I'd like to request we enter an executive session to discuss pending litigation. May I get a motion to enter in executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
With a motion from Linda and a second from Kevin, roll call vote, please. Do we do a roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Okay, excellent. We're going to move into executive session and then the regular work session will start at 6:30. Thank you. I'd like to end the executive session at 6:30. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the first work session of 2024. It's Wednesday, the 17th. Want to welcome everybody here, welcome the new town board members, and let's get right to it. Number one on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Everybody get a chance to look at them? No? Should we make a motion to approve the minutes?
I would make a motion that we table them.
Okay. And how, yeah?
I don't think that, I don't think you have enough votes to approve them tonight, but I do think if Linda and Kevin, if you review the video, then you can be.
Yes, not being part of it, we'd like to review the video, look at the minutes, and then we'll be good.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. So we'll hold on the minutes and move to the first item on the agenda? Yes?
Second.
Yes, do we have a second to table?
Second.
Second. Everybody agree to table the minutes? Aye.
Aye.
Candace?
Yes.
Okay, we're good, ready to move along? So any guests here tonight that I'm not aware of or aware of?
Nope.
I know I have someone speaking or on one of the items, right?
One of the applications, I think one of the applicants is going to be in the room and can answer questions.
Excellent. So we'll get right into it. First item on the, on the agenda is town rules of procedures, the revisions, and we're joined by our legal counsel, Pete. So Pete, take it away.
All right, so one of the things I noticed, the rules that were adopted at the organizational meeting were actually an earlier version of the rules. They were not the rules that the town board had been using after they made some amendments in March of 2023. So what we did is we made sure Jeff had a copy of the March 23 rules and we corrected some, there was some terminology that we updated to current practice, and I think Mr. Supervisor added a line or two on these, and I think that, you know, I don't know if there's any other discussion, if you want to go over any of those changes, but I think that, you know, it would be, you know, if these are acceptable, then we can adopt in the next legislative session.
Yeah, my only tweak was adding a timer straight to the public participation and with some discussion and just some learning I've done over the last few weeks. I know some towns limit the time to a couple of minutes or some government entities, and then some limit it to agenda items. And just kind of through the process of learning, there's a lot of reasons why you want, wouldn't want to restrict it to the agenda items, and this, this is not meant to, you know, limit anybody's ability to speak, so we're just going to limit it to five minutes. And part of this came from some learning I did, and you can Google some fun things, what happens in town board meetings, and people either go very, very long or it's kind of, you know, some of it's a little silly, in my opinion. So this is to, to limit that or at least have some control, and five minutes is a long time, so I don't think that would hinder anybody's ability to speak.
And as I read it, I understood that you may limit it to five minutes, that it's not as automatic.
Absolutely.
That you have the option to limit it. So if you saw things were going on too long, somebody was talking, that would give you the option. Is that my understanding?
Absolutely, yeah.
I would do it, if you're going to do it, to do it at the beginning before anybody speaks so that you have consistency and nobody has a, you know, nobody can complain about that. Yeah, the rules really, the rules serve a couple of different purposes. They kind of set up the organization for, you know, when resolutions need to be submitted, you know, how that process works, how there's legislative meetings and work session meetings, and then what happens in public hearings and public participation as far as, you know, providing a framework like that with the time limits and what have you.
Any other discussion? Any thoughts, Kevin?
We included in here, back when we did the last amendment, we included the option to use a consent agenda for certain items, too. We never ended up using it, but it's still in here in case we wanted to, you know, adopt that.
Great, so we can move this next meeting?
Get a resolution put together to adopt this as a amended or superseded set of rules, I guess you'd say.
Great.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion for a resolution to be prepared of, to adopt the amended and restated rules procedure.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouts?
Aye.
Ockenden is absent. Taglish?
Aye.
All aye.
Kevin, you might want to put your mic a little closer. I don't know if everyone can hear you, but.
I'll add it closer.
So the next agenda item is a revised conditional use permit for 1867 Penfield Road and a revised conditional use permit for 1807 Penfield Road. The first one's actually Huntinghorn, the second one is Gateway Natural Health, and Director Evers has got some information.
Yeah, so these are two separate applications, but they're similar in nature in that I'm requesting the town board authorize me to issue revised conditional use permits to each property administratively, and I'll take them one at a time to sort of walk you through. 1807 Penfield Road recently had a conditional use permit issued to them back in 2023 to reflect the current tenancy and the changes sort of, there was a hair salon that changed, hair salon space that changed user, so a conditional use permit was issued to reflect that. At the time, there was an empty office space that didn't have an identified use. Since then, they've identified a nail technician who'd like to use that space, so technically, based on how our code is written, that requires a revised conditional use permit to be issued. And so because it's a minor change in the occupancy of the building, there's plenty of parking, there's no signage, there's no physical changes being associated with this, it's a perfect candidate for an administrative approval of the revised conditional use permit. And so I'd be asking for that permission from the board to authorize me to, to issue. With 1807, Gateway Natural Health is a current tenant of the building. They have been for a number, a couple of years. They've recently purchased the property. They're going to be, right now, they're currently the sole tenant of the property, and what, we need to make a revised conditional use permit to reflect that. I will note they are going to occupy the primary structure, that's the building that fronts 1807. There is a rear building in the back that could be a future tenant, and so they would like, they would need to come back to the town board once a tenant was identified to determine whether or not that needs public, public hearing or if that could be advanced as an administrative approval. They've been a tenant, this is just simply like a change, and now they're the sole tenant. There's no physical changes to the exterior, only minor modifications that don't even need a building permit, is my understanding, on the interior. So again, under the regulations for four corners, this seems like a perfect candidate for authorization, for administrative approval. So I'd be asking for the town board to take a vote. I'm assuming that our town attorney might want them to be separate, or it could be combined, but to allow me to issue those both administratively.
And this avoids like a public hearing, is that?
Yeah, and this probably doesn't rise to the level of needing a public hearing just because it's, in both cases, it's very minor changes, and in one case, it's the, one of the main tenants is just taking over the entire space. Any, any question?
There's a procedure under the code that allows conditional use permits in the four corners area to be handled administratively, and so it's up to this board as whether or not you want to do that or whether you want to go through the full process with a public hearing and everything.
Any other? I'll make motion to issue a revised conditional use permit for 1867 unless you had something or, okay.
I would, I would do it as, so what you'd be doing is authorizing staff to handle it administratively.
Okay. I'll make the motion to have staff handle this administratively.
Perfectly.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
And is that for both or just for the 1807? Did the one, I just did the one.
1807.
Good question.
67. Oh, 67.
So how about Huntinghorn and, is it 1807?
Do you want to, we would make a separate motion for 1807 to authorize condition or administrative issuance? Do we need that as well?
I would do a separate, separate motion, yeah.
Okay.
I will make the same motion to issue, to have the staff handle administratively to make this conditional use permit for 1807 Penfield Road.
And I will second it.
Oh, God.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
I'll throw a pen at you. I apologize.
Aye.
Do you want to do, so what we could do, that's one way to do it, or just, the clerk can call the roll, too, and that's, that sometimes is easier to hear at all the votes, so.
Yeah, you can handle that, sure. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
So just after, after a motion and a second, then just ask the clerk.
Roll, all right, got it.
Or roll call vote.
Okay, next, all good? Next action item, very similar.
We still take a vote, right?
Right. Take the vote.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouts?
Aye.
Ockenden's absent. Taglish?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, I'll wait for the nod to, go ahead. You good? Okay.
You're good.
So very similar, next action item, conditional use permit application for proposed replacement tenant at 1790 Penfield Road, campfire tattoo. I believe the owner's here tonight. There he is, welcome. And I think Director Evers is going to explain again the details.
Great, so there is a, at 1790 is a multi-tenant building fronting on Penfield Road and also having main access along the backside of the building. There's a current vacant space that was formerly occupied by a barber shop. They've since relocated elsewhere, thankfully in the town of Penfield, and there's, that space is available. The applicant is Jacob Wright. He is proposing, requesting a conditional use permit to allow a tattoo studio to locate in the building. My watch would like to tell you what time it is, I do apologize. Really having a, having a roll today on this first.
Happy New Year, Ms. Ivers.
Glad it wasn't mine.
Yeah, so the, the applicant's proposing, and in the application has provided similar hours of operation, so 11 to 8 Tuesday through Saturday. They're indicating three artists and averaging about one to three clients per day. And so as we're looking at this application, a new conditional use permit is issued needed for the new tenant. The, up to the town board as to how they want to manage the application could be subject to a public hearing or could be similar to the previous two applications handled as a administrative issuance by staff. I think, you know, the, the intensity of use is similar or maybe less than the barber shop, just based on client base. I'll just pull up for the, for the board, the proposed signage is, is barely, apologize, I'm trying to pull this up and it's not working so well, so everyone can see. So this is the door, the entry, entryway. It's a small sign on the outside, and my understanding is there's also a small, similarly sized sign proposed for the inside of one of the windows. The applicant certainly here and can address any questions the board has. The other sign that would be replaced is there is an existing panel sign, and so obviously, and I will pull that up as well.
While Ms. Ivers is pulling that up, Supervisor, I will have a couple of questions here, and so if the applicant is, is willing to answer a couple of them, if he wanted to go ahead and join here or make his way. Go ahead, Ms. Ivers.
Oh, yeah, so then, just showing you the signage proposed, there is an existing free signage sign, and in keeping with, you know, any new business would have an opportunity to add their new signage here as well, so you'll have examples of what that would look like as part of the application.
Okay, and I apologize, I meant to try to swing by because I think when I saw this come through, I didn't, it didn't immediately come to me where the, the barber shop was, and while I understand that at least the intensive, intensity of use and utilization of the parking lot might be similar, I couldn't tell from the application, it's a tattoo shop plus art studio?
Tattoo shop and like art gallery, just in the sense of like we would just be hanging art and potentially selling art out of there, you know, kind of thing?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, like art, artists' art, you know?
Tattoo is an art.
Like prints, paintings, things like that, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it's mostly going to be trying to sell those items?
It will mainly be a tattoo shop, it's just I wanted to address that that probably would be happening as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, you know, certainly no objection to that, it's just not a commonplace combo, you know, so I can't say that I've ever like heard of this kind of business model, so I wasn't sure if it, if you anticipate hosting like art?
No, no.
Or what are they even called, like art?
An art show?
Exhibitions?
Yeah.
Or something like this, or how, how large of a component that will be of your business model?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to address the fact that we probably would have like a painting or two from our artist for sale, you know, kind of thing, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I know Kevin and I talked about maybe getting a Penfield tattoo, so maybe we can talk about that another day. Anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I, I read through at least the, the rest of the application, and it was fairly short this time and the sign marker, but it seemed pretty small, so.
Right.
And I, and I wanted, I wanted to see if they had that, you know, the iconic barber signs.
Right.
But I don't think it's this one, I think it's closer to four corners.
It is the other one, the other barber located on Four Corners has that outside.
Okay, so there's really no, I see there's no real physical alterations to.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Any issues on your end or any other discussion?
No, I, I thought it was very clear application. I like to see the signage, so I appreciate that. I think what we need to determine then, is this something that we want to, as Carrie said, move forward as administrative or if it's something we want for a public hearing? Is that accurate?
It is.
So I, I mean, I would prefer that it be set to a public hearing only because it's, just to see if there's any other public input, not opposed to it being issued administratively, but again, I think a barber shop is somewhat different than tattoo shop, even though the usage of the building and again, impact in terms of traffic flow, the parking lot, et cetera, is going to be very similar, but I just think the nature of the business is, is different enough in my mind where I think it would be helpful to have a public hearing.
I, I agree with that. I think, I think offering the public a chance if they have feedback, if they have questions at the end of it, is better to know that we've given the public a chance to be aware that it's coming, that we're looking at this. So I would agree with that, having a public hearing.
And so what, what is your anticipated start date?
So it was really just dependent on this meeting specifically.
Okay. And do you have any concerns or is it really going to impact at least your opening date if we at least started for a hearing and then?
No, I wouldn't say so, no.
Okay, so barring any public backlash, I think we would be moving towards an approval very, fairly quickly.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You know, obviously with any business, like the quicker that we can.
Oh, yeah, sure.
But no rush at all.
And again, if, if we wanted to call a special session or whatnot or do it administratively thereafter to again, facilitate the business opening, I'm, I'm for that.
Okay, so we would be looking at setting the public hearing for the next legislative session on the 7th. We do have enough time to advertise it as a public hearing before the next legislative session is, am I, can I, would I have permission to, to make that public hearing date set for the 7th?
So unless there's any other discussion or questions, I would, I would make the motion for a resolution to set the public hearing for February 7th.
I'll second that.
So what you're really doing is to, there's no time to set a resolution, to the resolution, but let's have a resolution tonight be to set the public hearing for the 7th.
Okay.
Yeah, and just one comment, all this falls under the four corners, and that's something we should look at because it seems very restrictive to, is that accurate or?
So I, I think, you know, this, the district regulations have been here for quite some time. I think there's an opportunity to take a look and see if there are ways to provide thresholds or, you know, that could be something the town board looks at in the future. I think every town, town code regulation or district probably has some areas where changes or modifications could be examined, so it's something we can look at in the future.
But this is unique to the four corners area?
So there's two areas in town that the town board retains jurisdiction over land use matters. One is La Salle's Landing and the other is the Four Corners. And in the Four Corners area, all, so usually have permitted uses, conditionally permitted uses and, and, you know, prohibited uses in the district, but in, in this particular district, all of the uses are conditionally permitted, which authorizes town board to kind of do thumbs up or thumbs down on, on the, the uses, as long as, but, you know, subject to being arbitrary and capricious in this particular instance. There's more we could talk about.
Yeah.
Because the legislative body could retain even more jurisdiction, but, so that's why you're looking at these here. There is a provision in our code, as we mentioned, that, you know, it reads in your absolute discretion, you can, in cases that deem appropriate, you can delegate it to the authorized official to approve or deny the application, but the, I would say that the normal course would be to have a, a public hearing and treat it kind of the default way, like go through the whole process.
Thank you. Okay.
Ready for a vote?
Yeah.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouts?
Aye.
Taglish?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, moving on.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
You guys, too.
Thanks a lot. So speaking of La Salle's Landing, next action item is accepting a grant from New York State Department of State for the construction of La Salle's Landing Park Comfort Station. And Director Ivers, please share more information about this.
Sure, so as this board is aware, in the summer of this past year, in 2023, the town submitted a grant application through the New York State Consolidated Funding Application process. The money, the, the program is run through the Department of State's Local Waterfront Revitalization Program. It's for implementation. The town of Penfield has an updated LWRP that we actively utilize to evaluate projects and to also look at opportunities for enhancing use and enjoyment of our waterfront areas. We made this application back in 2022 and we were not successful and did not get an award. Staff, the Finance Director Barbara Chirido and I did a debrief with the department to understand how we could have improved our application. We took their notes and resubmitted in 2023, and we are happy to say we received $624,000 of funding for the La Salle's Landing bathroom.
I'm, I'm, I'm only curious because I think the, the note said 640,000?
Oh, forgive me, it might, it might have been a typo on my problem. I think it is 624, and I apologize. It's a set number in the New York State record. I'm, I'm sorry, we did, we received the money and I promise the resolution will have the right number in it. I am really bad in a thousand tonight, I do apologize. I apologize, I might have wrote, written, had a typo in my notes. So what we do need is a resolution authorizing the supervisor to enter into contract with the New York State Department of State. That contract is between the town and the state, indicating that we're going to spend the money that they're giving us in accordance with the plans and the procedures as outlined by New York State.
Okay.
And I'll also give a big shout out and thank you to Mark Valentine and our Engineering Department because they prepared the plans, and more importantly, the cost estimate needed to secure the funding. So it's just been a good, it's a nice win, and it's going to be a much needed amenity down at a water park, waterfront park that we hear is very well utilized.
Can I ask, there's, there's a statement that the funding can cover up to 75% of total project costs, design and construction. Help me understand that, does that mean it will only cover 75%?
Yes.
And we need to come up with a 25%?
Yes.
Part of that can be in-kind services, so either those are billable hours on our end, or it could be, obviously, the bathroom may cost more than that or likely will cost more than that, just based on what we did on Columbus Crossing here and the bathroom we had here. The one down there, we're looking to have bathrooms as well as a shelter area off the backside, so we're expecting it costs more. Our estimate actually was higher than that, that's what they granted us. So that's the 75% they'll cover, but also as we have design time into it, we've got to do a grading plan, a utility plan, those hours can back out, so either they can be staff time into it or it can be obviously additional funds allocated by this board should the costs run higher than that.
And, and last year when we were making application, you know, the town board did so knowing that there would, might be an out-of-pocket cash contribution toward the construction, and the department, the Finance Director indicated that the, you know, the town board is aware that funds are available to help offset that cost. It's a, without the funding, the price tag for this restroom facility is quite large, and so this is a really great offset. Is that helping? I'm sorry, I want to make sure I manage addressing the question.
That does, that does help. I, that's what I read into it.
Yeah.
I wanted to make sure and that we had a way that those funds were available or, like you said, in-kind services. Thank you.
Is there a projected timeframe for this?
So we just received the official letter from the Department of State. They have to work with all their awardees on executing the contract between the communities. This can take some time. I don't know where Penfield is on their sort of order of operation of reaching out. They have a department or they have a division that handles the contract administration, so we will be in touch with them. It will probably, we're hoping that we can execute the contract and start design. I don't know if we'll make it for the 2024 construction cycle or if the construction cycle will have to go into 2025, but as we get more information about that, we can certainly be in touch with the town board to let you know how things are going along. God bless you.
Yeah, we need a plan and we got to go out to bid and all that, all that good stuff. I was just going to ask, what's the number on the bathrooms here at the softball field? Just curious what that came out to, can't remember.
What was our final number?
You're looking at me, don't, I'm not, that's yours answer.
More than half a million dollars is what we had into this bathroom here, and this was a very basic, there is no shelter, it's just a minimal bathroom piece with it, so I'm guessing will at least be three quarters of a million, which.
Okay.
Sounds like a crazy number, but unfortunately, given construction costs and where we're at right now, that's the range we're going to be in.
Okay, got it. Well, I think we take the money, so.
Definitely helps us on the way to.
Absolutely.
I did check the DOS grant approval letter, it was 624.
Oh, thank you.
So I would make a motion to prepare an, prepare a resolution that authorizes the town supervisor to enter into the contract with the Department of State to, as he said, take the money.
I'll second that.
And vote, Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouts?
Aye.
Taglish?
Aye.
All aye?
All right. Excellent. Moving right along to discussion about firearm discharge, the map revision. Director Valentine, Mark?
Thank you. So this is something that I was asked by the previous board to revisit. So Penfield's a little bit unique. We do have this firearm discharge map. We actually always called it the hunting map. So the first misnomer, we held a public hearing in the fall of last year. First misnomer is we call it the hunting map. This map really has nothing to do with hunting. Hunting regulations are defined by New York State and the DEC. They have a map that covers that. You can hunt all through Penfield. You can hunt all across New York State. That's where they dictate it. Our map has always dictated where a firearm could be discharged. So first off, we wanted to reset it that it's the firearm discharge map. So in your drop materials, as well as we've got here, showed what we shared with the public back in November. We were looking at that time as to incorporate areas that have new development. Subdivisions have grown up around it. We've got the mixed use area. We've got areas that the school district now owns, taking portions of those off. We did have a good representative of people for and against map revision. Some believe we didn't go far enough. We had some thoughts and concerns from our farmers. They see real crop loss from animals, deer, you know, and want to manage the deer, you know, in those locations that are, you know, causing damage for them. Subsequent to that meeting, the board tabled it and then the board asked to kind of see what other communities do. So I reached out to other communities similar to Penfield, talked to Webster, talked to Parrington, talked to Henrietta, Chi-Li, Greece, those kind of surrounding communities that are immediately in there. No other community has a map of this form and function. All the other communities just defer back to the DEC regulations. So they allow hunting as the DEC regulates it. You need to be 500 yards, 500 feet from a structure, yada yada, from, you know, that point of it. There are some communities, City of Rochester, around Nacoit, Brighton, they're very dense communities. There are no rural areas. They prohibit firearm discharge altogether. So just looking for some feedback from the board tonight, as I think we've got a couple of options. One, leave the map alone as it was. Two, look at some updates to it. Or three, I think, do we need a map of this sort if we're already governed and DEC already regulates, you know, where and when hunting can happen? So just bringing it back before this board, obviously, you know, new members here tonight. But that's kind of the homework I did between, you know, the last meeting and now is check with those other communities. What do they do? How do they update their map? You know, how do they do that? And they all said, we don't have that. We don't, you know, have that regulation in our community. I'm not saying we're wrong. This is something we've had for a while, but they all default back to DEC, which, you know, still governs in Penfield as well. So just wanted to kind of provide that and then if the board has.
I do have a question. One of the things I've been trying to understand is the hunting and the firearm discharge. Hunting isn't year-round, correct?
Different seasons for different animals and I'm not a hunter, so there are.
So I went to the DE website trying to understand, because one of the things that really struck me, it was a fascinating evening. I attended. I was in the audience that night. And I could understand both sides of it. And it was a struggle to really understand where is that answer? As people talked about, you know, waiting for buses with their children or walking their dogs at night, they would hear this, or having horses that they were scared were going to be spooked. So I was trying to understand, well, does this happen? These firearms going on? Is it, you know, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, but yet I know we don't have fire or we don't have hunting 365 days and I know it's not 24 hours a day. So that's where I understood why, okay, that's might be why we have a firearm discharge map. But not knowing the history of it, so just trying to understand, is that part of the reason? Do you know, is that why we put in a firearm discharge map or?
Yeah, I'm not certain where it first started. I know it hasn't been updated a number of years. It was more, it's always reflected where kind of the denser developed areas are.
Right, right.
In subdivision areas, you're never more than 500 feet from a structure. So it's just kind of improbable to, you know, to have firearm discharge in there. As you said, and I'm not a hunter, but I know there are seasons for, you know, each different animal. Obviously you need to be, you know, hunting during daylight hours, you know, so DEC already dictates, regulates that. You know, if anybody gets their hunting license, comes to the town hall and gets their hunting license, it strictly, you know, shows what your regulations are, when, where, season, you know, time of day and everything else. So I think those are already well stipulated by the state, you know, under their requirements. And we're not looking to change any of that and we're not looking to supersede their regulations.
And a couple of the comments were, what is, what can the repercussions be? If we just stick with the old or stick with the new and residents hear gunshots going off any time of the year or outside of hunting hours, do they have, do they have an ally in the town? What can they do? Because I'm trying to find a compromise. I'm trying to find something. And maybe the compromise goes back to what you were saying, is that no other towns do anything like this. We're wading into a territory that we shouldn't be and don't need to be.
Yeah, I mean, obviously if somebody ever feels in danger, 911, you know, and there's N Con officers that, you know, regulate hunters themselves that comes out of DEC. We don't have our own police force. So from the town itself, you know, I'm not running out there to, you know, correct that or not. It would be a police officer, it would be a.
They would need to be calling 911, is the.
It would go out there. So, you know, that would be, you know, their recourse for, if they had a concern.
Right.
So, yeah, a couple of thoughts. I totally agree with Linda, hoping to find a compromise. And yeah, full disclosure, I'm a hunter. I'm a member of both gun clubs. And my wife grew up not as, you know, gun hunting family. So I can appreciate both sides. The idea of my kids hunting really freaked her out. You know, I totally get that. And Linda alluded to the meeting, I think it was December, or maybe it was end of November, but both sides very passionate. And I have, you know, tremendous empathy for both sides. I actually met with a couple of people yesterday. They were very concerned. They were also in that meeting. And I totally understand their concerns. A lot of it, in my take, is people have to follow the rules. So that's a, and the same people I talked to kind of alluded to that, that, you know, there is a 500-foot barrier, which may be too short. And not to get into all the details, but I know that 10 years ago, they went, you could deer hunt, I don't know if it's 10 years ago, with a shotgun. And now you can hunt with a rifle. And that's a big difference in terms of the projectile, how far it goes, you know, so that is somewhat of a concern. Getting a wave off back there. But the point is, I think.
In Monroe County, you can't hunt with a rifle. With the fur deer.
Okay, yeah. Anyway, either way, I think if people follow the rules, that could solve a lot of these problems. I think one of the discussions was moving the line, if you will, and then having some people be exempted from it that have concerns about farm. That seems complicated to me. You know, I understand the farmers worry about, you know, defending their crops. It's quite a bit different feeling when you get east at 250. I understand development's going to keep moving, but if you follow the regulations and the rules and laws, I think that could solve it. And the way I left it with the people yesterday is, is I'm going to, you know, be a champion of their cause, so to speak. And even they alluded to, they want to find a common ground. So that's really my objective. Yeah.
No, go ahead.
And, yeah, I mean, I'll just say, I wouldn't make no changes. I also worry about what would happen if we, all of a sudden we get rid of the map. Someone might react to that one way or another. I grew up in Brighton. I think there's a no discharge rule in Brighton law, but that's more of an urban area, you could argue now. And Penfield's pretty big and vast. And so that's my overall take, if that makes sense. But, you know, people, it's not just hunting, by the way. People are going to want to, you know, practice in their backyard. There's also crossbow hunters that want to practice. And this came up in my discussion with these concerned residents. So hopefully, I don't mind talking to anyone. And if there's two residents that aren't communicating neighbors, I'd love to try that first before we, you know, make any changes. Does that make sense?
So I'm just trying to follow where your position is. You said you're going to be a champion of what cause?
Well, I.
A cause. I'm just trying to figure out where, what is your position on this?
So I try to, as Linda mentioned, I'm trying to bring people together without making any changes. And the field that was referenced, I, you know, I know where that is. I mean, it's also a different perspective, growing up hunting with guns, totally different. So there's got to be common ground. And if I was a neighbor of someone that was really worried about guns, I'd want to either let them know when I was going to discharge my gun. I mean, there's, there's something that can be done. And maybe rules aren't being followed, which was kind of implied to me. And if that's the case, then, you know, I can help have those conversations with neighbors that they're worried about. And I don't mind helping in any way. That's kind of how I left it yesterday. So my thought is not to move the map at this time and, but also not to eliminate it is one of the options. So. Any other thoughts? Yeah.
Yeah. So I appreciate a lot of the work that Mark has done. And I know Supervisor Leanouts, you met with several other interested groups. I think there is still some research being done. And I think one of the other questions that I had was, you know, the county of Monroe, as well as New York State, has some areas that overlap and govern this area as well. And I kind of wanted to better understand the interplay of not just what other towns were doing, but what is already the law for the county that's going to include Penfield. For example, on school districts, right, it's both county and state law that there's going to be no discharge of firearms on school campuses. So for the intent and spirit of the law that, excuse me, of this firearm discharge map that Penfield had historically, I understand and can appreciate that it was to, again, protect areas with denser population or to protect schools, for instance. And I'm not saying that, I don't have a position yet of like, let's eliminate or keep or expand. I don't have it yet. I'm still in the, in the phase of trying to understand. And then I'll again, note for the record that Ockenden is not here. And I know that he had also a position on this. So I would, I would ask at the end that we perhaps bring this back to another work session. But one of the ideas that I at least wanted to explore was even if Penfield did nothing with this map, expanded the map, or eliminated the map entirely, there are still overarching authorities, DEC and other governing agencies, county, state law, that already have a stake in this. And so whatever, it's like triple layers of law. So I don't know that we would add or increase protection when there's already much bigger agencies or governing authorities in addition to Penfield. So that's kind of one thing that I kind of wanted to tease out and better understand. And then, and I think we were trying to seek counsel also of, again, is a firearm discharge map required under Penfield town law, or excuse me, our town code and then town law for the state? And I think that answer was no, right? And I'm just going to confirm that that's no.
I don't believe it's required, but I need to confirm that because this came out, I think, in a discussion with a homeowner in a relatively new development in an area that wasn't covered. And I think they had like shotgun shells in their yard and so they were concerned about that. It was kind of brought up in the context of a, the land had been used, I think, for farming before. It was vacant land before and they were concerned. It came up in the context of a town easement, I think. And they raised that as an issue. And that's kind of how we started going down this path. But I don't really know why, to begin with, there is a map. I don't know what the impetus would have been originally.
We can research and go a little further back on that. To answer your other question, yes, DEC covers, you know, overall. So the regulations are in place. You can hunt with a bow, crossbow, all across Penfield, all across Monroe County, you know. So that is allowed, you know, so that's why it's not a hunting map and that's the misnomer there. We can look into the background of, you know, why or when this was first adopted by Penfield. It's certainly not a requirement by the state as obviously other communities don't have them. So it's not a, something we need to do to, you know, be in compliance, but can do that further research to.
And I guess I want to be careful because I don't want to, like, hunting is much broader than what the specific action item is for the town. And while a firearm can be discharged for hunting, I don't think that's, that's not, we're not getting as that broad. So I at least want to be cognizant of the nuance there. And so I think I would also put out to the board that there are going to be very passionate sides. There's more than two sides, right, to this dialogue. And I think at the end, it's just not possible to make everybody happy, you know. And I think we just have to be comfortable with that. And again, we're all trying to find, like you said, an area of compromise. And we're always going to be interested in protecting very dense population areas and schools and these things. But again, if there are overarching governing bodies, that's going to be subject to the task at hand anyway. I just want folks to be comfortable regardless of what happens to the map. It's not that it's going to be a free-for-all with firearms, right? So if, go ahead, Linda.
Oh, what I was, did you have something?
Yeah, I did, but you.
Okay. The one thing I think we also have to consider is however that current map was put in place, whatever the rules or guidelines were that said, based on density, we have as a town decided there will be no firearm discharge in these areas. If that rule, whatever guided that, put that in place, then we have to make sure, are we continuing to follow that rule? So I don't know that we can just say, we'll leave it alone, because then there are residents who are said, hey, those rules that you've used in the past, why aren't you applying to where I live now? That would be the one concern I have of just leaving it the same, that now we do, we're not following our same guidelines that we use to put in place, however we did that.
And I think it's important, as Candace said, to know the origins of this because I wonder to what extent this may have been made obsolete by changes that have been made in county and state law since this was adopted.
Yep. Yeah, I'll do the research ahead of the next, you know, work session, you know, for the board, see what we can come up with. And as you said, this map, we had Peker, throwing off subject is, we had a seeker that was.
We have to explain what that is. Actually, no one's to know what that means.
Peker was seeker by Penfield before seeker actually existed in New York State. So we were one of the first in the state that created our own. So to your point, we predated seeker, had our own regulations and then eventually got rid of Peker because seeker took over. So.
I'm going to stop, I'm going to stop Mark for a second because normally I'm talking alphabet soup.
I threw.
So we had environmental quality review elements here in Penfield. I say we, it was long before I was here, before the state had environmental quality review associated with decision-making. So Penfield had its own. Then the state adopted it. And then for a while, Penfield did both.
We ran parallel and then.
And then eventually yielded to the state's regulation as it relates to environmental review. So this could be a similar circumstance.
Could be similar. We adopted something before. There was a state regulation and now it's superseded by that. So let me do that research for the board and then I'll provide the information back to you.
So again, with seeing that we have additional research and to include Ockenden in the conversation, I would ask that we table this and bring it back at the next work session.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Just one quick comment and clarification is, yeah, I hunted Wayne County and a birdie told me you can't shoot a rifle or hunt with a rifle in Monroe County. However, you could still practice in your backyard. So it still brings up the point. But yeah, I'm with you. More research and I shouldn't mention, I was in a trivia months ago and I made the mistake of not picking Penfield as the oldest town. So it is the oldest town in Monroe County and it plays into the whole idea. Maybe we started all these rules one day and maybe now they're obsolete based on what the county and the state have done. So, yeah, I'm with you. Table it to the next work session.
You second it?
Yeah, I will second it. Yes. That was a formal motion, right? To table it. Second.
Okay. And Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanouts?
Aye.
Eklisch?
Aye.
All aye? To table?
Sure.
All right.
Supervisor, before you move on, I understand that there were no formal guests today on the agenda, but I noticed there are several Boy Scouts. And I'm sure you are aware, I don't know if we want to welcome them as well?
Yeah, no, I'd love to welcome. I think they're here, why are you here, actually? If I can just ask you. But I think you're part of a merit badge. Is that right?
Citizenship and community.
That's awesome.
So observe a town for meeting or court event, one of these.
That's cool. The boys are, they're all boys, I think, here. It looks like they're having fun with us. So make sure you stick. having fun with us. So make sure you stick around at the end.
Hey, listen, they're awake. I think that's the measure of success right now.
No, I'm with you. Well, if you can stick around for a minute, I'd love to say hi, if that's okay.
Give us some feedback.
Yeah, yeah. Not too much. Thank you, Candace, though. Appreciate that. So yeah, moving right along, we reviewed proposals received from Clark Road Barn conditions assessment.
So that is mine. So a previous town board has authorized, had, previous town board had authorized me to issue an RFP for a conditions assessment of the Clark Road Barn. That request was based on a recommendation from the Clark Road Barn Committee. RFP was issued in December with a deadline for submission of January 11. We sent the RFP out to, I apologize, I should have the exact number, probably seven or eight various firms. We had names provided to us by our historic preservation consultant through the Landmark Society. She provided a list of folks. We also included Matthews Peters, who had provided a very preliminary site assessment for the committee. And we received one proposal. And we'll share that there was another firm that was also expressing interest and asking questions that they did not submit, and indicated that they could not identify a structural engineer who could perform the work in the timeframe or to the extent that they needed them to. So we have one proposal. The proposal follows the scope of services that was outlined. It was for an amount of not to exceed $24,500 to perform an analysis of the conditions. It includes physical inspection, includes preparation of plans to document conditions, detailed analysis of what would need to be repaired, replaced, secured. And this would be, the intent would, the outcome would be to stabilize the structure in its current form and make no other changes, physical improvements. It's just going to be an analysis of condition, identification of a prioritized list of improvements, replacements, repairs, and then an estimate of cost that's going to have a pretty big plus or minus, just because construction values are changing, ever changing. And so it's really difficult to know that too much far in advance. So you have a ballpark, or what I would call a planning level cost estimate for what those repairs might cost. And so wanted to share that with the board. It's key. My watch is very attentive to the time tonight. I do apologize. I have no idea why this is happening.
There's no football game out tonight, is there?
I know, there is not.
Sorry.
It's disappointing that there was only one bid received. I was really hoping for it to be a competitive. Did you get any, I'm just curious. I'm not trying to restart the process. Did you get any feedback from the others of why they didn't submit?
So I will tell you that one of the firms that specializes in historic architecture indicated they could not find a structural engineer to team with to provide the level of service that was warranted. We had a couple of other providers indicate that they just were not doing this work any longer, or this was not the type of project that was something that they wanted to submit on. They thanked us for the opportunity and said, thank you, but no thank you. And then we didn't hear from some. So I don't have a lot of feedback.
Okay.
Any discussion thoughts?
So, I mean, I, so I serve as the town liaison to this advisory committee. And, you know, I'll start by saying that you three were very involved in at least trying to be familiar with what's happening with the town in advance of January 1. And that was very helpful. And thank you for doing that on behalf of the residents. This issue and what to do with Clark Road Barn was pretty, it was split with the last board. And I think it, but enough of us felt that before you knock down a structure of, like, what is it? You know, what is the structure? What condition is it in? And, you know, there are a lot of different ideas of what it could be in the future, or potentially salvaging components, timbers, or whatever of the Clark Road Barn, and then incorporating that into the new lodge that we're building there, or some other historical preservation element. And then there were a lot of ideas still percolating in this committee. But it's just, it's really, we're at an impasse of can't really get too far ahead in brainstorming an idea without knowing whether or not it's feasible, right, or knowing the condition of the barn itself. And so that's why the board at least had authorized for it to go out to RFP. And so now unfortunately, we're stuck with one bid where we don't know if that's a competitive or reasonable price. But I would ask, my position is, again, for that advisory committee to be empowered to make a decision or recommendation, not a decision, but a recommendation for this board to then intelligibly make a decision of tear it down, rebuild, rehabilitate, or do something else. I would, I think we don't have an option other than to move forward with the assessment. I know it's not cheap, but if it's really that specialized, where it's going to cost money, and there's not that many skilled professionals in that area, I think the price is what it is, you know?
I would agree with going ahead with it. And I would just say that I think that when this was voted on, the Shadow Pines purchase, that the residents were pretty clear that they wanted to preserve everything. And I think that we should be looking into the possibility of doing that to try to honor the original intent of why it was purchased.
I did, thank you. I did want to just, you know, in looking at this, the $24,000, you're right, I don't know how reasonable that is. In a way, I do think it's reasonable. When I went through, knowing how that barn is, and obviously even some of the dangers of that barn right now, I understand that. The other items and exclusions do concern me a little bit, where they say, you know, the reimbursable cost will be billed at 1.1 times. Any significant change in project scope will be a basis for renegotiation. Any design attendance, I just, I don't think that $24,000 is unacceptable, but do I need to be worried about anything there, based on what you all have seen in the past?
I apologize, and I failed to mention this. One of the things I did, have a conversation with the proposer, I noted that it had included in the scope of services, a meeting, two meetings with town staff representatives to first finalize the scope upfront, and then review findings at the end. I reached out to the proposer and said, the town board would really need a presentation or like a conversation with you at a work session, you know, to share your findings with them directly. And I would also ask for you to do the same with the advisory committee. And so he was more than willing and able to put both of those into the scope as part of, with the price as presented. So we'd be modifying slightly some of the elements of this proposal, because some of the assumptions of what the town can offer and provide in terms of equipment, we might not be able to. So we'd have to finesse some of the final details. The end product of what's being delivered wouldn't change, but, you know, sort of what they're doing and how they're doing it might be slightly different from what was presented as the proposal. But I think that's an important note, that they'd be coming to this board to make a, to share their findings directly, so that the board could ask questions. And same with the advisory committee as well, so they could share their thoughts. And we'll point out that they're very clear that this is just to stabilize the structure. It's not to make any improvement. And it's also not including any feasibility analysis of what, how, or what the building could be used for. It's not looking at the site outside of the structure. So we're not looking at parking, utilities, and there'll be no plans related to future improvements. It's mostly, it's just stabilization of the structure, just so we're clear on what that end product would be.
And that's because the town yet doesn't have a clear plan identified. So we can't really instruct. There's nothing yet to test the feasibility of.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, my only thought is, without knowing all the details and all the history quite yet, you know, I think of barnyard builders, which I think is a show, how they can take old timbers and utilize them. That seems cool to me. You know, my only worry is we go down this road of spending a lot of money to improve it, and, you know, where does that end? But I don't disagree with doing some kind of feasibility. I also don't want to, you know, I trust the decisions town board made in the past. So, yeah, I won't hold that up. And I don't disagree with all your comments, actually, if that makes sense.
Okay. In that case, then I'll make a motion that the bid be, that a resolution be prepared to authorize the, award the bid to KF Architects and Fortia Structural Engineering Design.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leenhout?
Aye.
Tecklisch?
Aye.
All aye?
I've been instructed I can step in for Mark if he has to leave to call.
Next action item is the Monarch Butterfly pledge requirements. You ready, Mark?
I'm ready.
Take a sip of water.
Again, my apologies. So the Butterfly pledge, we've done the last couple of years. We did it in 2022. We followed it in 2023. Just seeing if this board is supportive of doing that again.
I'm going to take, Mark, do you want me to take over for you or no? You're good.
So we got support from the EECC supporting this, moving ahead with this. We did six measures last year to qualify, three. So I don't think it's a big lift, but just seeing if the board is in support of moving ahead with that.
I was very enthusiastically in support of it. I think it's great in continuing Penfield in being more sustainable and then environmentally friendly. And also, it's just beautiful. So I am in favor of it.
And I'm the liaison to that committee. And, you know, it's one of the things that will make us as a town more attractive for like environmental grants and stuff like that. So that's also a practical thing beyond the philosophical aspect of supporting the monarchs. So.
Yeah, it's great.
How are you with Butterfly?
I think it's great. I'm just, I just am curious, how did you follow through on those six actions? How do we, because we do these all within one year, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So it was a collaborative effort. Some of them was done by our Parks Department.
Okay.
Some was done by collaboration with Color Penfield Green, as well as Healthy Yards, New York, Healthy Yards, Monroe, excuse me. So they all did some, all in actions of, I don't have them all to name off, but we've done some pollinator gardens, mowing practices. We've implemented at Shadow Pines. So some different efforts up at town to help support that.
I think there was like a list of things that would qualify for each of the categories, or just suggestions of what other towns or other municipalities that take the pledge, or kind of, and then we just pick one that's feasible for us. Do we have the manpower, the interest, and then of course, with our partners.
But we, right, we've demonstrated, we've done this in the past, and we've done all the actions, and we know how to go forward and do them again.
We're required to do three. We did six last year. There's a whole list, and we can pick different ones.
Outstanding.
We're overachievers.
I love it. Kudos. Take a bow. That's great.
Do you need an action from us, or was that just to gauge interest?
I think, yes. We need to authorize the supervisor to, again, sign the mayor's monarch pledge. So if the board can vote supervisor's signature.
Yeah, just one quick, I'm not, you know, I'm not the expert on monarchs, but I was a beekeeper for a few years, so we can talk about that another time. But I think it's fantastic. So, yeah.
I would like to make the motion that we authorize the supervisor to agree to this.
I'll second that. Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leenhout?
Aye.
Tecklisch?
Aye.
All aye.
All right. Final action item of this evening is a follow-up on the Empire Boulevard Sahar property, if I'm saying that right.
Correct. So this is actually two properties, 1527-C and -B. My apologies for not having it in the files. This is a piece of property, the last piece of property that is not either owned by us or Monroe County on the east side of Verandic quite Bay. So Kerry has up on the screen the maps. We've got the Waters Edge development on the south. As part of that development, we ended up owning 1440, which is highlighted on the screen. That property was given to the town of Penfield. This property, 1527-C and B is where the old trolley line is. You can kind of see that line coming down in, is owned by a private individual. And then the next part, property to the north, the 420 is actually part of Abraham Lincoln Park, is owned by Monroe County, is part of Bay Park East. So we have approached, had a grant we were pursuing in the fall, didn't pan out. There is another grant opportunity now to pursue up to $50,000 for the purchase preservation of open space land. This does have steep slopes. It has woodlot, it has flood plain, it has obviously a budding the bay, so it has wetlands and water cores. So almost all of our environmental protection overlay EPod areas are on this piece of property. And it also provides a pedestrian connection in that area. So previous board authorized staff moving ahead with a grant. Similar to some of the other grants, there's a 10%, 25% match. This one has a max cap of $50,000. So looking for the board to authorize. We did an appraisal on the property. I believe it was $72,000 and change for the property. So if we got the 50 grand, looking as the board supportive of spending the other $22,000, obviously if we only get 40, vice versa. So I don't have an exact number for the board authorizing, but just obviously going into the grant, we need to have the support of the board that we're willing to pursue this property for preservation. We have indicated or allocated potentially spending money out of the.
Incentive zoning.
Incentive zoning, thank you. Incentive zoning fund. So this was a fund that was used in the past. Developers paid for higher density in other areas of town. So you had a base zoning. The developer paid some monies into a fund. Sometimes it went towards drainage. Sometimes it went towards, you know, culvert replacement, so a betterment to the community. There are some funds available. So we have a pot of money that could take incentive zoning money, which actually increased density in other areas, to now be utilized for a preservation of a land. So that's where, again, the previous board was looking to expend dollars out of that incentive zoning fund. So just looking tonight is whether this board is supportive of pursuing this additional grant and continuing to look to buy and then preserve this piece of property.
My question is, if we approve this and we are able to purchase it, how do we then make sure it is protected for X number of years? Is it zoning? Is there, because it's EPod, we're okay?
It would be owned by us. So the town of Penfield would be in control of it. So right now, we have not done anything different with 1440. Obviously, we have no plan for it. But it would be wholly under the control. We would outright purchase the property.
But could also sell it, is, if in.
Could. I mean, in, I've never known the town to sell any property. So it's not a practice. That's it. I've been here for all 210 years, but.
You've been here for 18, though, so.
I guess mine is, if I, I love the idea. I think it's important to preserve this type of land when we can. I just always am thinking 10, 20 years. Have, did we do the right thing? Did we do it all properly so that it is truly preserved? That's my only question.
And we've reached out to the county. The county is supportive. We've asked them for letter of support for the grant funding. Obviously, the county parks thinks it's a great idea. You know, they would love to connect us. You know, if this is completed, we would have a trail connection from La Salle's Landing Park.
That's nice.
All the way up the bay towards Webster. So it would be a.
Yeah, because we've got trail connections through here.
Yeah, we've got a sidewalk through the Waters Edge, but we do have easements through Waters Edge. We'll have the public right to access that property.
So to clarify, though, at least the ask from the board tonight is, you're looking for the commitment to move towards the purchase, or at least allocate funding for the purchase. So if we go for the grant, get nothing from the grant, you're going to be looking, if we want to then enter into.
We would come back to the board and say, do we want to buy it all alone? So I'm not looking for an allocation of dollars, you know, specific amount tonight. Come back to the board once that's determined. But just want to make sure that, obviously, we're obligating, if we get the grant, that we're obligating the town to spend some dollars.
To do something, yeah. So it's asking again for our commitment between anywhere of zero to $72,000.
Correct.
Right. And when would you get feedback on the grant? Just curious.
I don't know. It's due the end of this month. So this is timely here. Usually, it's a couple of months. So it would probably be the April timeframe, maybe by the time we hear back is, you know, where we are with it. And, you know, keep up conversation with the property owner. And again, we don't know if they'll accept our offer or not. We can only offer what the appraised value is of the property. So that's.
So it's zero to 72?
That's another negotiation we need to get in at that point, but at least we can pursue some grants.
Okay.
Great. Any other discussion? So we make a motion. Great. Any other discussion? So we make a motion to move it forward, or no?
Well, what's, so, yeah, so clarify what the motion would be. It would be a motion to move forward with the grant, understanding that it would obligate the town to purchase the property.
To allocate funds?
Okay. I think we would wait to allocate funds until we know what that amount is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, but.
Now it's just going for the grant.
Okay, so I'm going to make a, a motion that, that either the Department of Development Services or Engineering be authorized to apply for the grant.
I'll second.
Barry.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye, sorry.
It's okay. Lee Houts.
Aye.
Hagglish.
Aye.
All aye.
Terrific. Well, great. We're making good progress, and I appreciate everybody's hard work. And we're going to move to a couple informational items, or maybe one. Mark?
Yep. So this is an update. So, again, previous board asked the Conservation Board, now the EECC, Environmental, Energy and Environmental Conservation Committee, to look into becoming a Tree City USA community. They looked at that. They put forth a draft local law. We had a public hearing on that in September. Again, got feedback on that from the public. Brought that back to this board. The board wanted to get EECC's input on that, shared it back with that group. The group thought most of the comments at this point go towards the forestry plan, which is kind of the next step in the local law, or not the local, next step in the process. So just kind of bringing it back to the board tonight is whether the board is still interested in, in continuing to pursue this, moving ahead with the local law, which would be the first step in the creation of the Tree City. And then once we have the local law in place, then we would work with an arborist, work with the EECC Committee to then develop a forestry plan, is how do we look at our community, how do we develop what those standards are when we look at public property, when trees are removed, how, you know, how those are managed. So, know this has kind of been out there a while, so just kind of wanted to bring this back as an informational item to the board. You know, it's still, in our process, it's still on our radar. And just want to make sure the board is, again, still supportive of moving ahead with this, if there's any.
I, I, I think this is one of my comments back in the day, but I am still, would love to see, would like to see some type of oversight made up of, of, maybe it's the EECC, but I believe there should be some oversight committee, a portion of the existing EECC, and not just the DPW having sole responsibility.
Yeah, I agree.
Understood. There are conditions where they need. If it's, if it's a danger, I would certainly understand that wording in there. If there was a threat to somebody, waiting for a committee to, to provide an insight, or to provide an okay on it. But I believe even under Tree City, that is one of the, the guidance.
Yeah, and then who that committee is, you know, obviously is, is subject to this board, and, you know.
Yeah.
Who that is, whether that's staff, whether that's a committee, whether that's, you know.
I would, I would go back to the EECC and see if that is something that would be part of their core responsibility, or area of responsibility.
So if I recall, Mark, that, the, the law itself had, wasn't yet adopted, and there were still some revisions that were being done in-house, right?
Yeah.
So is this, are you looking, at least from the board tonight, for feedback on whether or not we continue to pursue that designation?
Yes.
Okay.
And then obviously, feedback such as.
Right, right.
That we can, ultimately, we have to form a law. You guys have to all agree that you're ready to accept it. We've got to have it 10 days ready prior to a resolution adoption. We've got it on the website, so we're still tweaking what the verbiage of that local law is. So it's, I'm looking for feedback from the board to make sure what we present to you and put back before you is, is what you're looking for. Make sure, obviously, we're still continuing down that path, and the board still has that, that site to, you know, continue this.
So I don't know that the, we had seen at least the updated red lines to the, the tree law, or at least the proposed tree law, because I think we hadn't, we were continuing to incorporate comments from the public hearing as well, which I, I think you had voiced some.
Right.
I think it would be helpful if we can bring this as an action item at the next work session, but in advance of that, if we can get a copy of the updated red line, so that we can have.
There, yeah, and I'm sorry, I, I could be wrong, but they did update something today for today's meeting. I, I thought that that was the latest. Is that an accurate statement?
Today's is the latest, correct.
Okay, okay.
To my knowledge, the EECC has not proposed any further change to the local law, but I just wanted to make sure it was up there as what the latest.
Okay.
Condition was, you know, as of today, was in there. Obviously, we can go back to the EECC Committee and say that this board would like to see an oversight committee incorporated into the law, and get their thoughts and feedback. So it may, based on their schedule, it may not time out that, just to the, if the board doesn't see this at your next work session, if we're asking the EECC Committee to look at an oversight committee, have their comments, recommendations, they need a little more time at the next meeting to talk about it, discuss it, propose some changes. So just so the board understands, this may not be on your February work session, just with timing on how that.
Understood.
That committee moves forward. But based, based on the comments received at the public hearing, the EECC was comfortable with what the draft law, and that's what I put in, in tonight, so.
Okay, so I, I'm sorry, so I, I was confused. So I did look at this attachment, and I think some of the, particularly the authority under Section 3 was not redlined, and I know that I had voiced, I had echoed a lot of the concerns from the public hearing as well. So I, and it's, I, I don't, I, I don't think any law is healthy to be vested full authority in one person. And I, and I don't care what department it is, but I don't think it should just be one person as the ultimate arbitrator of, of anything. And I think just, it's just healthy to have a process of due diligence, due process, checks and balances, so that there is a committee, or where reasonable differing opinions can be heard and then vetted. So I, I think that's kind of what you had voiced in the hearing, and I had made those comments. So I, I apologize. When I saw this in our Dropbox, I didn't see those already incorporated, so I, I just assumed that it was the, the former draft. So if we can, I, I'd have to go back through my notes to see what I had forwarded to you after that hearing, but I, I, I am in favor of pursuing Tree Town designation. I think it kind of marries very well with the Monarch Pledge, and again, a lot of the other sustainability efforts from the town, and it kind of, again, goes towards the, the sustainability actions that the, the vision of the town as a whole. So I am totally for it. If this law comes to me as is, I would not be in favor of adopting it, only because of those concerns with, with delegated authority.
Okay. And that's why I didn't put it on as an action item tonight. I knew.
Thank you, yeah.
Circle back, have further conversation. Thank you for that feedback. We'll share it with the EECC, and then, as I say, they'll take some time to, to vet through that.
What is the next move for the EECC?
Um, they just had their.
It was last week.
Last week, so it'll be a month from now, so I'm just seeing, by the time they discuss it, put something forth. I don't know, timely where our meetings aligns.
Okay, so if it's, if it's helpful, I'll kind of, I, I know I took notes from that public hearing. I'll try to consolidate that and dig it out of, of what I sent to Mark separately, and then I'll send it to Kevin and Mark, and if we can kind of coordinate with the EECC and, and any other in-house feedback, and then maybe bring it out as, what do you, what do you think, supervisor, as an action item? Do you think it would be sufficient time before, oh, I'm sorry, you said not, not to February, so do you?
Yeah, it's going to be the second Thursday.
Yeah, okay.
Sure. And I agree that EECC makes sense for them to be involved in the process, or control it going forward, so, yeah.
So.
You'll need a, a public hearing again, too, because.
It's a change.
True. Yeah, so it may be a February, March action item of this board to discuss, make sure we're happy, and then reschedule a public hearing based on the revised language. Okay.
Yeah, makes sense.
Solid point, thank you.
Any other thoughts on that? I think we're getting to the end. I just want to thank the Penfield team, the staff. Great job, as always, working really hard, and new town board members were slowly getting up to speed. I know, I use the fire hose analogy, it's been a fire hose the last couple of weeks. So, appreciate everyone's patience. So I don't believe there's any old items, anything held? Any new items? Okay, with that, I think we can adjourn at 7:40. I think it's 7:49, I should ask Carrie, she's got the stopwatch going.
Ask my watch, it's not answering now. 7:50 I have on my computer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.